of the Beach Cities. We want to thank the city of Hermosa Beach and the staff for providing the council chamber for this forum. The League of Women Voters is where hands-on work to safeguard democracy leads to civic improvement. We encourage you to join the League of Women Voters and be directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our community strong, safe, and vibrant. The League was organized in 1920 when women first gained the right to vote. Its purpose then, like today, was and is to promote active, informed citizen participation at all levels of government through education and advocacy. The League is a grassroots organization. All persons, male and female, 16 years or older are welcome. And if you turn around, you'll see we have two high school girls working with us, student rep from Miracosta and a student rep from Redondo Union High School. The League does not support or oppose any candidates or political parties. We have two separate roles: citizen education that we call voter service and advocacy. We are here today as part of voter service. First of all, I'd like to thank all the volunteers from the League of Women Voters helping to make this event possible. The question sorters are sitting here, and they will screen questions into topics, trying to avoid duplication and personal attacks. Please address your questions to all the candidates. The candidates have chosen lots in terms of the order in which they're going to speak. The candidates, Mr. DeToye is chosen first, Mr. Larson second, and Mr. Massey third. The candidates will have two minutes to make an opening statement. I will read the questions from the audience for the candidates. If you have a question, please raise your hand for a card and again for collection. And the girls, the high school seniors, will pick up your cards. Please address your questions to all the candidates, and as they have asked, please print clearly so I can read them. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. I'm gonna turn my page when I can get it. The closing statements will be made in the reverse order of the opening statements. The timekeeper will indicate when the candidate has 30 seconds left and when the time has elapsed. Candidates are expected to promptly relinquish the floor. The candidates have agreed to confine their presentations to issues. And since tonight's forum is designed to provide a nonpartisan setting for voters to hear all positions, we ask that there be no demonstrations of support or opposition to the candidates or their positions. And please hold your applause until the end of the program. And just for information, I know Hermosa Beach doesn't need it, but I'll state it anyway. We've worked with you before, and you're a pleasant community to work with. And that is, excuse me, and that is that all of us, I and the two question sorters, do not live in Hermosa Beach, so we know nothing about your candidates other than what we read in the paper. I'd like you to know that. The opening statements will start with Mr. DeToye.
Well, thank you, Barbara. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing and hosting this debate or discussion tonight. Thank you to the audience for again being here and watching from home. And thank you to Councilmember Massey and Mr. Larson for continuing our discussion tonight. When I first learned that my great grandfather had been the president of LA Chamber of Commerce, had involved in numerous nonprofits, I was inspired by his service to the community. That's why I became a firefighter, why I served as commissioner on EPAC, and why I'm seeking to serve as your city council member. I moved to Hermosa Beach nine years ago. I fell in love with the beach environment, and when I got married three years ago, my wife and I knew this is where we wanted to start our family. I moved, or we now have a daughter, 18 months old, and the experience of parenting in this community has given me much deeper appreciation of our city. I now spend much more times in our parks and libraries, and while pushing the stroller around town, I noticed the conditions of our sidewalks and our streets and our wonderful business environment. I see how our city infrastructure impacts our quality of life and determines our level of public safety. I know how much families with young children and seniors depend on our city resources, and I want to make sure our city council meets the needs of all of our residents. On the professional front, I'm a firefighter with the city of Riverside. I have a long commute to work, but every time I return home, I'm reminded how lucky I am to live here. In my work, I see how city planning and preparedness can save lives. I want to use my expertise as a public safety professional to guarantee that our city council factors in public safety in each of its decisions. I have a bachelor's degree in finance and a master's degree in public administration. I sit as a fiduciary trustee on a Southern California Firefighters Benefit Trust with $40 million of assets under management, which is roughly the size of our city budget. I shared with you what motivates me to run for city council and why I'm believed I'm prepared to focus on the most important decisions facing our city. I look forward to discussing more tonight and moving forward. I hope I can earn, and listening to your biggest concerns moving forward. I hope to earn your vote so I can be your vote on Hermosa Beach City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larson.
Hello, and thank you to the audience here in the council chambers and to those of you watching at home. And thank you to the League of Women Voters. You are providing a valuable service to Hermosa Beach. Trust in local government is the foundational bedrock that solidifies confidence, allowing for effective governance. Reliability of city council to advocate reasonable and deliverable solutions aimed at the betterment of the residents and guests is the sacred duty of council members. Fourthrightness and old-school hard work still resound as solid reasons to believe in City Hall. Voters deserve and are entitled to know the political philosophy of who they are electing. Voter turnout is critically important to ensure the majority of residents are represented in the selection of the new council members. Five consecutive years of participation in Hermosa Beach politics have prepared me for the five-year council term up for vote November 5th. Five years of active involvement has provided me with the educational insight and complexities required to hit the ground running once I am sworn into office. Background and understanding of the issues is critically important. It takes careful study, time, effort, and energy when making independent, informed decisions that council managers must face. My head, my heart, and my guts are immersed and enmeshed in the fabric of the community. The five years I have spent learning will now pay dividends as your newly-elected city council member. Hermosa Beach City Council requires a genuine taxpayers' advocate who will focus his efforts on visible and usable improvements that produce betterment for the residents and guests of Hermosa. Primary goals include street and sewer repair, public park restoration, improve public safety-
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
...and business-friendly.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you to the League for hosting this. Thank you all for being here. Joan Arias prompted me to become a member of the League, and the story I love to tell about Joan was when I was canvassing in 2015 and went to her door, gave her my pitch, and then followed it up with, "Can I count on your vote?", her response was, "That's none of your business." Voter education is incredibly important. That's part of why I joined the League. This event tonight is a critical part of that, so I thank you all for being here and thank the League for putting this on. We've accomplished a great deal over the past four years. Just this week, it's worth pointing out, that North School has broken ground. We've broken ground on improvements at PCH and Aviation, which ultimately will include a new crosswalk across 14th at PCH, which is a designated safer route to school, as well as rebuilding our fire station so our firefighters can have permanent quarters. If you walked by the fire station this evening before you came in here, you probably noticed that the second-floor bunkhouse is gone, so that project is well underway. My wife and I grew up in Southern California. We chose to raise our kids in Hermosa because we care about it, for our family and for yours. Working together the past four years, we've improved quality of life by finishing South Park, by building the Eighth Street safer route to school, which is almost finished, by putting a new roof, exterior, and solar power on the community center, by supporting the district in its efforts to get Measure S passed and get our schools renovated, and as I mentioned, by rebuilding the fire station. We protected you and your family by eliminating the oil company's oil drilling rights that they retained after Measure O, by bringing in county fire, by focusing our PD on downtown. We balanced the budget, filled the rainy day fund, added Trader Joe's, Lazy Acres, Skechers, and a number of other businesses to town. So in general, Hermosa is in terrific shape, and we want to keep it going, and that's why I'm running for reelection.
Thank you. And now the first question. What are your plans to make streets safer for bicyclists and pedestrians? I'm gonna read this because I don't know what it quite means, but if you mention sharrows, you get points deducted. So for those of you... Anyway, we're gonna start with Mr. Larson.
All right, so streets is right up my alley and what I want to see improved in this city, and there's lots of things that we can do to make them better. First of all, repave them. There's a lot that are pitted and busted up and collect water all over the place. Also, the painting of the streets, the striping of the streets, the signs on the streets, additional signage on streets where necessary. Places like our crosswalks that are very busy down on Hermosa Avenue, we could have additional flashing yellow lights when people are in those crosswalks, because when you walk out, a lot of times the cars obstruct the view, and you can't see people, and there's a lot of traffic down there on Hermosa Avenue, so that's something. Bikes need to follow the rules of the road, and pedestrians, we need more sidewalks where especially like things like Eighth Street's a great example, and perhaps on like 25th Street where the new North School's gonna be, there's a big hill, and that could be improved a lot there as well. So I'm all about fixing our streets, and we need to start by getting work done. We're just not doing enough work. We're not doing it quick enough.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Barbara. We're doing a great deal to make our city appropriate and inviting for people who are using different modes of transportation. We mentioned Eighth Street. That's been a huge success. Every time I walk it, there are tons of people walking it, which shows me that there's been pent-up demand for years for that street. We are, as I mentioned, putting a crosswalk at 14th Street so the kids can cross PCH safely. The city adopted a BikeMaster plan in 2011. Over the past four years, we have been implementing it. So we've added Class 3 bike lanes on Valley and Ardmore and Pier as part of the implementation of that BikeMaster plan. We've also obtained a grant to study speed and safety on Prospect, which is going to engage the community in how we make Prospect a corridor for people who may not want to use their cars to get to school, to get to the store, to get around their neighborhood. We've added bike racks. We've improved ADA accessibility on both Hermosa Avenue and PCH so folks in wheelchairs can get up and down those main corridors easily. And generally speaking, we will continue to do those things-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DeToye.
Thank you. So increasing the street safety is all about accessibility. There was a great success on Eighth Street, and we need to continue that to citywide projects. As a young father, I see the, I push the stroller around town with our 80-pound lab, and I see the need for the safe sidewalks and the safe streets. Out walking today, canvassing in the neighborhood, there's also the simple things. For the first street in first place, we need to make sure that there's just a simple error. They're one-way streets, and there's only one sign on the entryway, and we need to make sure that we share the knowledge with the drivers, because according to lots of the residents, most people don't obey the rules up there about the eastbound, westbound one-way. With young families, families walking with animals and individuals that are in wheelchairs or walkers, we need to increase the safe routes through our sidewalks and make sure that we upgrade them, and they are all ADA accessible. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question. How do you plan to curtail stormwater pollution from reaching the ocean? Mr. Massey.
Thank you. So we have the Enhanced Watershed Management Plan, which has projects that are in Hermosa Beach. We've done one, the Pier Avenue Project, which has been tremendously successful. We had one down at the Green Belt in the south end of town, which the council voted to not proceed with so that we could work with Redondo to have Redondo site the bulk of the project in Redondo Beach, because Redondo Beach and Torrance are the primary contributors to the stormwater that comes out of the Hurando Storm Drain. So where we stand right now with that project is we are working with Redondo to take on lead agency status, and the project will proceed entirely in Redondo Beach presumably. And if there's part of the project that can't fit in Redondo Beach, a project in Hermosa will be reasonably commensurate with our contribution of stormwater to that storm drain. And then we have one more project to do, which is gonna be on the beach to catch the remainder, but those are all projects that we are moving forward with right now as we speak to clean up the ocean.
Thank you. Mr. DeToye.
Thank you. We definitely need to capture our stormwater and keep our, the bay healthy, keep the ocean marine life prospering right now. We definitely need to work with our neighboring cities, Redondo Beach and Torrance Beach, and make sure that, or Torrance, and make sure that they are capturing their part of the water. We need to find a solution that works for everyone in our town, not just impact the Second Street residents down there on the Green Belt. I'm glad the city council decided not to go forward with that project. I would have voted against it as well. And we need to look at our, the property to the south. And then again, we also need to look at maybe smaller projects along the way. I shared last debate that Manhattan Beach has a lot of smaller stormwater capture systems along their Green Belt, and if that's something that can work in our city, that's something that I would look to, but we definitely need to reach out to our residents and see, make sure that none of these solutions impact them, or see what impact them least. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Yes, Hermosa Beach should put in stormwater infiltration projects that capture our own stormwater, and there are several places that we can do that around town and several places that need improvement. For example, 25th Street, the 25th Street Lake that forms every time it rains, that stormwater needs to be diverted a little bit better than it is. The main stormwater infiltration project that was recently voted down, that, it's a good idea to have a big stormwater infiltration project because it captures multiple city stormwater, but it's not a good idea to put it on the Green Belt or in South Park. Those were, those were not good ideas. So moving it over toward, closer toward the AES plant makes a lot of sense because there's open land and it's gonna be redeveloped, and that will help with the Hurando outflow. The reason why we took the lead in the first place is that we share that outflow with Redondo, even though our stormwater is really minimal. So Hermosa could capture its own stormwater and, and, and deal with it, and there's a place on the beach that also comes out that I'd be in favor of putting a project in down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Do you believe the climate crisis is real, and what will you propose to help combat it, both tangible or intangible? Starting with Mr. DeToye.
I have a unique experience seeing the devastating effects of climate change with fighting fires throughout the state. We are having these historic fires multiple times a year, and I talk to the residents out there asking what their winter was like, because the big issue is not just the rain, it's the snow. All the residents say that they've had, you know, growing up there for years, their, the snow that has fallen in the Sierras has decreased immensely, and because of that, we're having these devastating fires. I definitely want to protect the environment for my kids, for all the young youth in the generation. And doing that is, starts with personal accountability, and we definitely advocate for the personal accountability. We're personally enrolled in the Southern California Edison 100% Renewable Energy Plan, and we should definitely push that out to a lot of the residents, because a lot of them don't necessarily know that's an option. The other thing is we need to keep working with electric car chargers around town. It's a good start to motivate our residents to be able to charge their vehicles, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Larson.
Yes, I would say that the climate is changing, and it's always changing, but I don't believe that we're in a crisis per se. I do believe that the United States of America is the cleanest country in the world and getting cleaner all the time. And it is our technology and our economic engine that will lead the rest of the world in the changes that everybody seeks and desires. Everybody that I know and everybody around the world wants a clean, healthy planet, but how are we gonna do that and maintain the life that we want to live? And healthcare is a great example of that. We all want more and more and more. So the United States, maintaining its strength, its economic engine, its way of life, our democracy, producing better products, the gains in reductions are all coming from industry. We're actually lowering our emissions. We're reducing our pollution, and the rest of the world needs to follow our lead, and we need to help them. And so I feel that keeping us strong and safe and so that we can sustain this as a nation to lead the world is the most important thing that we can do for climate change.
Thank you.
Yes, of course, there's a climate crisis. I find it astonishing that that's even a subject of debate here between the three of us. Let me just talk to you about what we have done as a council. We adopted the general plan, Plan Hermosa, that committed the city to reduce our carbon emissions by 66% by 2040, which is consistent with Governor Schwarzenegger's executive order from when he was in office. One of the ways we're gonna do that is by joining community choice aggregation. It's good enough for Manhattan Beach, it's good enough for Redondo. They both have joined. It's a simple concept. We take charge of how we buy our power and who we buy it from, and we get cleaner power at lower rates. We need to continue to build out our EV charging infrastructure. Just this week, we opened up several new EV chargers atop Lot C downtown. We continue to lead the way in making Hermosa Beach a friendly place for people with electric vehicles to come, and finally, continuing to make Hermosa Beach a place where people can safely walk and bike, whether you're a kid, whether you're a senior-
Thank you.
...or anybody in between.
This next question has a very long introduction, but the readers and I determined that it at least will explain it for some people. It says, "My question relates to city government transparency and accountability to residents vis-à-vis oral and written questions to the council in open session meetings. The Brown Act limits the council from voting on an item not on the agenda, but it allows the council to: (1) Provide a brief status to a question;[1521.08][1521.08](2) Agenda size an item for a future meeting;[1525.58][1525.58](3) Ask the question of the city manager;[1529.35][1529.35](4) Refer an item to staff for follow-up. Very few oral communications ask for an item to be agendized. Would you support a parliamentary rule that a vote be taken when a resident asks for an item to be agendized?" And we're gonna start with Mr. Larson.
I almost want to say, could you repeat the question? But that was a real long one. I, I don't think so, having heard that the first time that I would support a parliamentary change based on a question to agendize a question. It's up to the council to decide, to listen to the voters, to decide what's important and to what we're going to talk about. If it is something that's of importance, it should raise itself to the level of the council knowing about it, and people can raise the question while they're at the meetings. But I think it sounds, that sounds to me, that was a pretty long question, maybe I didn't get it 100%, that it would just add a layer of complexity, and there would be some unintended consequences with agreeing to something like that.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Barbara. No, it's an inefficient way to proceed. People are able to reach the council through any number of ways. One is by participating during public participation at a meeting. Others are by calling, or emailing, or otherwise writing their city council members. The city council puts the agenda together, together with staff. If there are enough people or an issue is important enough to get on the agenda, then it goes on the agenda. If folks think there's an issue that needs to be addressed by the council, then they should bring that to the attention of the council. But forcing a vote every time somebody suggests an agenda item would be grossly inefficient process, and the gears of local government would grind to a halt.
Thank you. Mr. DeToye.
I agree. I'll also say no on this on face value. When I started this campaign, I wanted to be the transparent process. I have a phone number, email. I plan on knocking on every single voter's door out there and hopefully catching them when they're home. We live in a 1.4-square-mile town. The five council members are elected to represent and serve you, the, the public, and I hope and when I am elected as your council member that I will remain an open book. You'll see me in the parks, you'll see me walking the strand, and I hope that's the same for my four other colleagues up on the dais. We are all neighbors here, even after this election, and we hope, hopefully, we can, any concerns are just a simple phone call, text, email away, and we can help further the cause and talk to the right department heads to make sure that the issue's resolved.
Thank you. Now that Los Angeles County voters already have approved a permanent financing mechanism for Metro, what is your opinion of light rail as an additional option for Hermosa residents and visitors? Do you support a light rail link between West Hollywood and Torrance? We're starting with Mr. Massey.
Yes, absolutely. We, in the process of adopting Plan Hermosa, studied where Hermosans go for work, and over 90% of Hermosans leave the city to work. A lot of them go as far away as Burbank, but a lot of them go to downtown LA, to the west side, to Hollywood. So the more we can build out the transportation infrastructure to allow people to get there efficiently without having to sit in the 405 or sit on, sit in traffic on the 405 or the 110 is something I'm all for. And so the sooner we can get our transit system built out, and the sooner we can make it as efficient as possible to get from the South Bay to other parts of the region, the better.
Thank you. Mr. DeToye.
I am also in favor of that light rail running north-south. We have a option for individuals who work downtown with the commuter express bus, for them to commute downtown, but to have a north-south to get individuals to work at Century City and options to ride the public transportation, I'm absolutely supportive of it. I love visiting my brother. My brother lives in New York, Brooklyn, New York, and we go out there, we can zip around the city on the subways. When you go travel to Europe, public transportation's amazing, just to hop and see all the different neighborhoods. I truly think that connecting the Los Angeles neighborhoods would bring the sense of community, bring the city together, and I'm definitely in, in form of the mass transit.
Thank you. Mr. Larson.
Okay, light rail, I have a feeling that we're going to get it. It's going to be- put in. I'm not a big fan of it because I think it's just not very efficient for the west coast. I mean, some cases it works, in some places in San Francisco, but it doesn't, it is not meeting rider expectations. So we spend a lot of time, effort, and energy, money, disruption, everything else, putting light rail in, and it doesn't meet rider expectation. So, I am not a big proponent of it, but it appears to be going in. So what are we going to do? Well, we're going to have to make sure that we don't get a lot of stack and pack housing at the drop-off points where we get a lot of density and high rises, and we get a lot of parking variances where buildings don't have to have parking because they think people are going to ride the rail all the time. But in Los Angeles, we don't have a subway system. We don't have like the east coast. We don't have that, we're never going to have it. It's not going to happen. Uber and private vehicles and all kinds of other things are going to take that, the place of that here in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Tomorrow begins an important series of U.S. Supreme Court decisions involving LGBTQ and federal rights. Although California has state protections, everyone still wants to feel safe in their community. I did feel because it was underlined. Including Hermosa, where some incidents of racism and anti-LGBTQ sentiments have affected residents. What is your feeling about inclusion in Hermosa? What is your personal perspective in LGBTQ rights? And what can Hermosa do to be more inclusive? Mr. Detoy?
Perfect. So personally, I'm in full support of the LGBTQ community, supportive of all individuals of every single race living in our town. To help bridge these gaps, it's all about education, building the community, creating community events that show that, you know, just because you believe a certain way than your neighbor, that we're still neighbors and we can still move on and make this place better together. It's all about, again, bridging those gaps, creating those community discussions, and these events to bring the community together, to celebrate this beautiful place we live in, and allow everyone from all walks of life to also celebrate in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Yes, I'm supportive of full, full-scale human rights and dignity for everybody. I don't experience a lot of discrimination or see a lot of, of anything anti-anybody, really, in Hermosa Beach. It's a very loving town, and people tend to be kind to one another all over the place. And we don't have a lot of this flare-up that you might see in other places. So, I'm, I'm fully supportive. I'm, I'm, you know, in support of being kind to everybody and to not discriminate based on sexual orientation, your race, your creed, your color, your religion, or even your political views. I mean, we all have to live together in a close-knit community. We all should have friends on both sides of the aisle and all kinds of persuasions. And, and I know I do. So I think everybody else does too, for the most part. There might be a person or two, but they're the very far and few between. So I think we're doing a good job. We're doing a great job. It's okay to raise the issue and talk about it, and it makes us better.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Barbara. Yeah, I'm an ally for our LGBTQ community. Not just tolerance, but also support. It's important that we make sure we create safe spaces for them and know that we love them and know that they're a part of our community, fully vested, as is anybody else. I just want to bring up, since there was a mention of racism, one incident that happened recently as an example of how we approach it. We recently had what we believe are kids who sprayed onto one of our city tennis courts a racial epithet. And I spoke with the mayor about this over the weekend. And we got out a press release which made clear that the city of Hermosa Beach was investigating that to find out who perpetrated it, and also sending a clear message that that is not something we tolerate.
Thank you. Do you see major problems with pension liabilities? If you see problems, what would you do about them? Mr. Larson?
Pension liabilities for the federal government, the state workers, and all the people who still get pensions is a big deal. In the private sector, most of that's gone away. And it's a self-funded pension. So there, the pensions right now that a lot of people get might seem excessive to people who don't get a pension. And it might seem unfair. But all of that is baked into the cake, okay? And all of those pensions are going to stay. I would be in favor of not increasing it or making it bigger. And at some point, we have to move public employees over to a more self-funded pension liability because the taxpayers can't foot the bill forever on this. And it really drains people's wealth. You know, it's hard enough to make it in California as it is. And you see a big disparity between the rich, the have, and the have-nots. And the have-nots are paying the freight. And it's time that, that gets adjusted.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Barbara. Pensions are something that have to be managed, and it takes long-term planning. We have been paying ahead as a city on what is called the side fund to CalPERS. When we paid that off in the last budget year, rather than lower our pension contribution, we kept, continued to pay at the same rate, but we're paying the extra into a, an interest-bearing trust fund that the city controls to make sure that we're equipped when in the future, as we expect, CalPERS asks the city to make a bigger contribution to covering its pension obligations. So we are paying ahead in order to make sure that the city of Hermosa Beach is out ahead of its pension obligations. So they are well managed. Thank you, Barbara.
Mr. Detoy.
Thank you. I've sat across the table as an employee, that is a firefighter, working with the city to manage pension costs. That's something that we need to keep in mind here. We need to work with our employer groups, make sure that they come up with a solution. Because all this is negotiation, it's all set at the table. With my financial background, the degree in finance and a master's in public administration, I think I'm the best qualified candidate to help solve these solutions. The pension costs are increasing. All expectations are saying that at 2022, they're going to plateau due to a PEPRA law, which is all new employees have a different pension formula. So, with these pension changes that Jerry Brown enacted a few years back, the cost of the pensions are actually going to go down after 2022 due to the current fiscal management of the city. Our issues are definitely not as bad. And as, we cannot take pension holidays. We need to keep paying the same amount and making sure our money's earning interest because the recession is coming. It's not if, it's when. So.
Thank you. Do you support the South Bay City's Council of Governments' efforts to bring municipal broadband to the South Bay, including Hermosa Beach, as an alternative to spectrum and files? Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Barbara. Yes, of course. I voted for it. I'm a, I'm our delegate to the Board of the Council of Governments. This is a win-win situation. We are going to get more options in the market for high-speed broadband access for all of our communities. And the loop that is going to be installed is going to help us synchronize traffic lights along the main thoroughfares that connect the South Bay. So this is absolutely something that we need to do in order to create competition in the marketplace, as well as provide a level of service that our communities are entitled to.
Mr. Detoy.
Yes, I am in favor of the broadband expansion. Internet service has become a utility, and our businesses need it to survive. Bringing a lower cost, higher bandwidth internet to the South Bay businesses will make them not only do, they'll prosper with it and hopefully keep their costs down with the internet services. As Councilmember Massey mentioned, the synchronization of traffic lights is also a big advantage of this, hopefully cutting down commute time on PCH and other major thoroughfares. I am definitely, I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Well, in the private sector, competition keeps our prices low, and the customer is king. So the more competition we have in most cases, the better it is for the consumer. So, additional broadband capabilities in the South Bay would probably make a lot of sense. And we're going to get more choice, more speed, more competition, and it makes the private sector sharper. And just going back to the last question a little bit, this, you don't get this in a lot of government sectors. You don't get competitive edges. So you really have to pay attention to the costs and what you give out. And pensions are a part of that. But more competition, better for consumers.
Thank you. Hermosa Beach is uniquely vulnerable to sea level rise. But, cut that. It is so small, and so much of it is near sea level. What are your plans to manage and ameliorate the risks? Mr. Detoy?
I heard a segment, read a segment recently on the sea level rise in California and the expectations moving forward. Our beach is actually pretty well protected due to the width of the beach itself. Communities like Malibu, where they have a much smaller sand front, are definitely more vulnerable. I think we just have to listen to scientists and listen to the people that are experts at this. I, if someone asked me to put a fire out, I'll do that. But for the people that are modeling the sea level rise and the climate change, we need to listen to them, have the best advisors possible, and reach out to the, the community that, that knows best. And again, just do our little part to make sure that our community, our residents, our properties are safe.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Sea level rise is related to global warming and climate change. So as the climate gets warmer, the sea levels rise. That's what we're being told, and it's probably true. Gets warmer. So what we really need to do is focus on greenhouse gas reductions and pollution reductions. And the United States is the best country and the best-suited country in the world to lead that cause. One of the biggest polluters in the world, the absolute biggest polluter, is the country of China. And we have been cozy with China and enabled China to pollute for four decades. And it's time that that stops. And part of what we can do is put pressure on our trading relationships to make China clean up their environment so they don't add to global sea level rise. The United States is leading the world, will lead the world. And as long as we maintain our economic strength, growth, and the prosperity of our people, we will bring the world along with us. Without the United States, it's, it won't happen. Because we're free people. The voters decide. The people choose this. And in Communist China, that is not the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
I think it's worth pointing out that China is still a signatory to the Paris Agreement. So, the American leadership is sorely lacking in this area under President Trump. Let me note that the city has adopted in the past four years an adaptation plan for sea level rise. As Mr. Detoy explained, we actually are in better shape relative to a lot of other coastal communities. But that certainly does not leave us high and dry. We will continue to implement that plan, and we need to do so. But more importantly, we need to eliminate the effects, which means we need to put our oil in the water and be part of the solution to eliminating greenhouse gases, eliminating the greenhouse effect, reversing what's in the pipeline already, so that our kids and their great-grandkids are going to inherit a world that's going to look a lot like the one we have today.
Thank you. There is no way to ignore the hatred within the current presidential administration. With that being said, transparency in local government has become increasingly more important. What are the ways in which you will ensure the citizens of Hermosa will be represented transparently, fairly, and without marginalizing any of its people? Mr. Larson?
I, I post a lot of stuff on social media, and maybe this is where the hatred question is coming from. But as far as being transparent, I have been very open about who and what I am, and who you would be electing as your councilperson, and the thought that I put into when responding to people. Transparency, we, we've had a few hiccups with that here as of late. The Teen Choice Awards would be a good example of that. The water infiltration project getting so far ahead out in front of its skis would be a good example of that. But with me personally, I'm really open. I, I almost emote too much. I have a, I'm a very bad poker player. So, it's difficult for me to get past first base with trying to, to fool somebody. So, just me as a person, and here in the council, and working with the other council members, you're going to get a very honest shake, and you're going to hear what it is that we're doing and what we're trying to do. Because we want to tell you, or at least I do, and I want to listen.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you. I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but let me just point out that I think that our council meetings are full of public input all the time. And we get public input outside of the council meetings, in writing, and on the street, and by phone. So we continue to do that. Some nights, depending on what's on the agenda, the chambers are full. Other nights, they're not as full. It depends upon how controversial topics are, and what's before the council, and how engaged and interested the community is in a particular topic. But as long as we continue to make as clear as we can the decisions that are before us, reach out to the right groups, make sure that what we anticipate our stakeholders are informed, we can make sure that folks are involved and get the input in time for us to consider it in making our decisions. There are a couple of examples that Mr. Larson brought up. We definitely want to make sure that we continue to pay attention to our process so that we're proactive rather than reactive as much as we can be. Because it's better to have input before you make a decision than after.
Thank you, Mr. Detoy.
I think dealing with a lot of the hatred that's in the divisiveness in the community right now, just encourage everyone to log off the internet. We need to have these community events. We need to have these community discussions. I'm trying to reach out and, again, knock on all the doors, not talk to all the voters when I'm campaigning, but I also want to do that continuing, moving forward. I want to host events, you know, at Valley Park, and South Park, and Seaview Park. I want to have the community from all different parts of the, the town to get together, not just get in conversations on Facebook and say things you wouldn't say face-to-face, but actually deal with these real discussions, talk about it over a cup of coffee. And that's how we find real progress in finding, making a community. So, I definitely want to keep working with our, our community and working with our residents to make Hermosa even a better place to live.
Thank you. What exactly have you done in the last five years of active public participation? Mr. Massey?
Oh, it's a long list. We, we negotiated the end of the oil company's drilling rights. They had filed the claim after Measure O against the city. And we told them, if we were going to settle that claim, they had to relinquish their lease on the city yard, they had to relinquish their state lands commission permit, and all of their mineral rights, which they still held, and which we worried that they might sell to a more sophisticated company like Chevron. We got that done. That means the next person who comes to the city is not going to start on second base if they want to drill for oil. They're going to start at home plate like McPherson did 40 years ago. We brought in county fire to fix the fire service. Our response times are shorter, and there's now always a truck in the station, which is better than it was when we had a city fire department. We focused the police department downtown. We reopened the substation. We created a downtown unit. And the acting police chief will tell you that downtown is unlike it was five or 10 years ago. It's much safer. We've improved lighting. We've improved cleanliness downtown. We've improved parks and mobility in town. We have done all that while balancing the budget, filling the rainy day fund, and reducing pension and healthcare costs.
Mr. Detoy.
So, to start off, five years ago, I started getting involved, you know, as a firefighter. I got involved with the advocacy for firefighters in Sacramento and Washington DC. It's a proud moment. Just last week, we had our presumptive for PTSI get signed by Governor Newsom. More firefighters and cops kill themselves every year than die on light of duty. So having that bill get pushed across the finish line, and having gone to Sacramento to lobby on behalf of that bill is definitely something important. Bringing it back home to Hermosa Beach, I served as Emergencies Preparedness Advisory Commissioner for the last two years. With that, I focused on the business preparedness side of things. I was actually on a fire, talked to one of our EOC manager, who was our strike team leader at the time. And he shared the fact that 40% of businesses don't reopen after a natural disaster. So that became my passion to serve on EPAC. I created a pamphlet to help our businesses get more information and help protect our fragile business community in Hermosa Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Five straight years of active participation in Hermosa Beach city government. I ran for office in 2015, 2016 in a special election, 2017, and now 2019. Running for office takes a lot of work, takes a lot of preparation. You have to be prepared. I've attended most of the meetings in some form, and, or watched them. I've spoke at many of the meetings. In fact, I gave opinions on how I would vote before the council vote on most of the major issues. I spoke out against the infiltration project, and I'm glad we moved that. I spoke out against the CCA, or Community Choice Aggregation. I'm glad we haven't done that yet. I've pushed for visible and usable improvements. It added the betterment of the residents' guess. And lo and behold, all of a sudden now, we quote-unquote have $20 million that we're going to spend on capital improvements. I'm not sure where it comes from, but that's what they say. And so, my participation has led to things that we're going to now be able to see and use. And it's going to make the town better. I'm pushing for public park restoration. I'm pushing for the Clark Building restoration.
Thank you. Explain what you feel is the appropriate role of a city council member for issues in Sacramento and Washington DC. Mr. Detoy?
Can you rephrase that? Repeat that one more time?
Explain what you feel is the appropriate role of a city council member for issues in Sacramento and Washington DC.
Perfect. So as your city council member, I'm going to be advocating for funding from Sacramento and Washington DC to help fund the projects in our town. I have my personal beliefs on the state and national level. I'm not going to mix them up with advocating for what we need in town, which is going to be funding. Most of our funding for the major thoroughfares is either state funding, and then working on the larger projects in town, like the stormwater infiltration project. Again, we have to talk to our state senator and state assemblyman to make sure that we can tap into some of the, the funding from the state to make sure these projects actually go through. state to make sure these projects actually go through. Those are the roles of the city council member. It's where the fiduciaries of your money. We want to make sure the money's well-spent, and then also if we can reach out to larger government organizations to receive some more funding to help processes move quicker. That's definitely our number one role.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
Advocating in Sacramento and Washington, D.C. is going to be a tough duty for us here because I'm not sure they listen that well, but we need to advocate for the local resources that come back to Hermosa Beach for sure. But there's things that we could do to help us out. We need to advocate for less regulations overall, things that Sacramento dreams up like, you know, no gas appliances in people's houses and things like that, and also zoning control. We need to keep Sacramento out of our local zoning control because one of the things they're trying to do is to make it so we have to accept high-density housing with limited parking, which will just make our parking situation worse. So the laws that do things like that and affect our businesses, we have new laws that affect the businesses, and they're trying right now, talking about single-use plastic bans, and I don't think they know how that matriculates through the business community either. So protecting our local community, protecting local governance here in Hermosa Beach is what we are job number one in Sacramento and D.C.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you. City council members definitely have a role in Sacramento and D.C., and it starts with advocating for local government interests. Those are the routine interests like funding, but they're also the less routine interests like addressing crises that are affecting our society. So right now, there's a lot of discussion about things like housing, transportation, homelessness. We need to be part of the solution. We need to be up there in Sacramento, out in D.C., communicating solutions that come from the communities to these problems. Otherwise, Sacramento and Washington, D.C., you're going to try to solve them for us. That's the nature of how this works. And I'm going to stop by pointing out that we need to support efforts to hold the Trump administration accountable on every level and in every way. It's no secret to anybody who reads the news that we have a wayward administration, and we need to support our state officials in making sure that we hold that administration accountable at every level.
Thank you. Will you please comment on the homeless situation in Hermosa Beach? It is currently increasing. There are people living on valley who have been there for over a year. Several tents recently have started on the strand, near the public restrooms in front of the beach house, and taking up the Space Shuttle Memorial Site. These areas have gotten trashed with the people living there. We're starting with Mr. Larson.
Relieving the homeless from homelessness in Hermosa Beach is one of my biggest campaign promises that I'm trying to make to the city. I believe this is a real crisis and getting worse, and it starts with the unhelpful and unhealthy court decisions that allowed the city of Los Angeles to now encompass about 36,000 homeless people, and they're moving south. They're moving through Venice and moving to the beach cities and moving down here. So I want to continue to fund and even increase the funding to our police officers who help with our third-party providers like PATH, people assisting the homeless. We need to fund these outreach programs. We need to coax the homeless out and into shelters because it's good for no one that homeless people are homeless. It's not good for the homeless people, and it's not good for us, the citizens, who really, it's very difficult to look at it. It breaks everybody's heart, and we want to know what to do, so we need to do something. We can't let it stay the same. Something has to change, and something's going to happen. It will force change, and I want to get to it before that.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you. We have to keep our community and our homeless population safe. It's as simple as that. We adopted a homelessness plan in July of 2018 that was as a result of months of stakeholder meetings that involved law enforcement, the faith community, the beach cities health district, the city school district, the chamber of commerce, local businesses, the county agencies, beaches and harbors, fire and lifeguards, mental health, the public library, on and on. It was an important and robust process, and we developed a plan that had five goals that we're implementing over a period of five years. At their most assertive, these include clearing sleeping paces and encampments so that those don't develop in the city of Hermosa Beach. At its most collaborative, we have quarterly meetings between law enforcement throughout the beach cities to make sure that we're comparing notes on what we're seeing in our communities, and it also means that we are bringing to bear county services and regional services to make sure that our police officers are in regular contact with the homeless population in Hermosa Beach so that those homeless people know how to get services, know that they're available to them, and can be taken care of. Thank you.
Mr. Detoy.
Thank you. So answer the question, the single question in there is, for the tents on the beach, we have a city ordinance against it. So there's an enforcement issue with that specific issue. But homelessness is a complex issue. We're not going to just simply get rid of the homeless. We have to find long-term solutions, and that's working with our county partners, state partners, and the cities around it. We need to continue working to get the homeless individuals into permanent housing and also invest in programs to keep individuals in their homes. We need to connect the homeless with supportive services, both the physical and mental healthcare that is needed, to ensure that they get help. As a firefighter, we deal with the homeless issue a lot in Riverside. I've personally been on calls and medical aids where a homeless individual in extreme heat, we provided them water and cooled them off in the rig while we waited for the homeless outreach program to show up. That homeless individual was able to get the supportive housing and the services they need, and unfortunately, there's no connection. We don't know where the future went, but hopefully it's beneficial.
Thank you. Air and water are crucial elements of life. Clean air and water regulations start at the local levels. What will you do to ensure we will have clean air and water for years to come? Mr. Massey.
Thank you. It's something that we have been working on for quite a while. So let me talk about what we talked about at the beginning, which is making Hermosa Beach a place that's friendly for people using modes of transportation other than cars. We continue to do that. We also continue, as I mentioned, to build out our EV charging infrastructure, to make Hermosa Beach a place for residents and visitors alike to easily have electric vehicles as an alternative to combustion engines. Correcting where our power comes from by joining the CCA, getting cleaner power to our community is essential to be part of the statewide solution and also to benefit our community. And then moving forward, as I mentioned earlier in the debate with our stormwater project, so we can divert the dirtiest stormwater before it hits the beach and keep our bay clean as a result. All of those things, and I might mention, coming to us in a few months is an agenda item which will have us matching Manhattan Beach in terms of how we regulate single-use plastics. So all of those things go into making sure that the air and water in Hermosa Beach is safe for all of us.
Mr. Detoy.
Thank you. This is definitely a passion of mine with a young daughter and want to make sure that the air that she breathes is clean, and I think we all remember the smog days in the L.A. basin and seeing the incremental progress that we've made in making our air cleaner in the community that we live in. So all of it, again, starts with the personal accountability. We made the jump for a zero-emission vehicle this year, and again, educating everyone about the Southern California Edison's renewable energy. The more information we can give out to the public, the better it is that we need to have, lessen our emissions. I also want to advocate for the stormwater treatment. We're going to capture the stormwater. Let's treat it and then actually reuse it. We need to have the clean water, and it's we definitely need to keep the community in mind, and we're primarily, or we're about 50% renters too, so reach out to programs for renters and how they're able to lessen their emission standards and make sure that their water is clean as well.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
We have tremendously clean air and water in California, and God bless us for that, and I want to keep it that way. The state has taken control of a lot of the power production mandates, which is good. We're producing a lot of solar power, and it's one of the reasons I don't believe in the CCA is because we already took it over at the state level, and if we get, if we become a utility, essentially what we would be here in Hermosa, we would have a regulated utility against a slightly regulated utility. The two would ping-pong off each other, and rates would go up. And I don't, I think the value statement or the value proposition for CCA is gone. Stormwater projects at the local level, we should do. We should be involved also with the new stormwater project that we're looking to put down in Redondo, the big one that we're going to do up here on the Green Belt or South Park. Also, our businesses can't be using chemicals that are banned, so if there is some case in that, we have to make sure that code enforcement talks to them, and we can't use certain lacquers and things like that that get up in the air. And then for rivers, you know, the plastic pollution, the single-use plastics, we need machines in front of our rivers to capture it.
Sorry to interrupt you. The Brown Act allows the city council to briefly provide an answer to a question in the open session, providing there is no action taken. But the city lawyers and staff have prevented the council from answering even the simplest question on status requests. Would you support a rule that the council is given the freedom to respond to a question or status request, and if not, why? Mr. Detoy.
I'm unfortunately not a lawyer, and I am going to learn the Brown Act when I get elected to council a little bit better. From my understanding, there's no back-and-forth at the dais during public comment, but that's not to say that after public comment is closed that a city council member can give an update on a project. I think status updates are important. Again, citizens come to the city council meeting to get updates and have that public advocacy, get the chance in front of the microphone to ask for more information, and there's no back-and-forth at the dais, but definitely having a status update, I am in favor of.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
Yes, having sat through a lot of meetings over the last five years and spoken at the meetings, I would say that it's probably not a good idea to get a back-and-forth going from a question asker or speaker and the council. It's, that's just ripe for escalation and back-and-forth, and a lot of things, public getting involved, outbursts and things like that. So I think if you want the council to take up your issue, you need to come to the meeting and speak to the council. That's a great way to do it, and it might take more than once. It might take more than twice.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you. It is at the discretion of the mayor, and that's where it should remain. If you go back and watch the videos of the meetings when I was the mayor in 2017, I often did, when the public came up during public participation and expressed a need, whether it was a local need or a broader need, I asked the city manager, can you update us on that, so that the member of the public who had raised that concern during public participation would be educated. And if there's a specific problem, we often ask the city manager to make their card available to that person so that they can follow up and get their questions answered and get connected to the right staff member. That's the way it should remain. If you create a hard rule, then it becomes a matter of enforcement, and it slows down the meeting, and there's often a lot of business to be done. So it should be at the discretion of the mayor as it is now.
Thank you. Many business owners say they don't get the support they need from the city or the chamber. Without mentioning mistakes of the past, what forward-thinking, out-of-the-box ideas do you have to help our small businesses, starting with Mr. Larson?
Okay, small businesses face a very huge obstacle these days. They're competing largely against giants like Amazon, and I'm aware of competing against Amazon. I do it myself. So they need to be protected in a lot of different ways. We cannot choke off the parking for special events like we do in the summers. That really hurts our small businesses. They need to ring sales every day. We can't be nickel and diming them with all kinds of things, like for example, to put a sandwich board outside of their shop advertising the sub of the day. They have to pay a big fee, and if they don't, they get fined. We also really, we need to make downtown more cleaner, more cleanliness. We need to resurface the parking lots downtown. Stripe them. Make them more attractive. Cherish our businesses because they, these people go to work every day, work very hard, have to ring the cash register every day to make money. They don't have any guarantees. That cash register rings, they get paid. If it doesn't, they don't.
Thank you. Mr. Massey.
Thank you. The city's enjoying the highest sales tax revenue in its history at this point, so businesses with good concept and good execution are thriving. We, in response to requests from the business community, allowed A-frame signs at a discounted rate, allowed limited live entertainment permits so that establishments with unobtrusive entertainment like trivia nights could have it without going through an expensive and time-consuming conditional use permit process. We eliminated parking requirements for outdoor seating at snack shops, which allowed Cafe Bonaparte to open, and it's allowed snack shops to open down on the Pier Plaza. We've had the longest parking meter holidays in city history. We've improved lighting and cleanliness downtown, focused our police department on making it safer. We have added office space in town. Unida down on Hermosa Avenue, there's another one two doors down, which is under construction, and we just recently approved renovation of the Biju building to allow office space. That's going to provide daytime foot traffic. So we are doing a variety of things which are in, keeping in mind our business community, and I'll say on top of that, we've added Trader Joe's and Lazy Acres and Skechers to bring both workers and anchor businesses to town.
Thank you. Mr. Detoy.
Thank you. I want to help our small business community by cutting unnecessary regulations and championing supportive city policies. We also need to encourage and ban so promote our local businesses. We can't be promoting other businesses for out-of-town interests. We definitely need to attract new and diverse businesses to meet our local needs, and the biggest thing, I think, is getting a seat at the table in city council, or not necessarily in the chambers, but an advisory board. If you don't have a seat at the table, you're probably on the menu, is the famous line. I definitely, the first part starts with listening. So we need to listen to our business owners. We need to see where we can improve the current regulations, and then also dictate someone in staff. I wouldn't, I was not in favor of adding the city manager, the assistant city manager position. I'd rather have an economic development liaison in there to help be that advocate for the businesses in Hermosa Beach.
Thank you. This next question deals with climate change again, and I know you've all spoken about it. So I'm just going to ask you if you would like to comment on whether mankind is speeding climate change and whether, how that will affect Hermosa Beach. Whoever you wrote that, I've edited it since we've already talked about that. We're starting with Mr. Massey.
Thank you. Yes, it's going to affect all of us and in a negative way, so we need to reverse it. But the beauty of it is, we can not only protect the planet for future generations, but we can also develop the technology that will be sold to the rest of the world to allow them to solve the problem. So if we flip the script and view this as an economic opportunity, which leaders in California do, we are going to be the world's leaders in developing the technology that is going to not only solve this problem, but also put us in good stead to be an economic powerhouse for generations to come.
Mr. Detoy.
I definitely think, you know, man-made is, mankind is contributing to this with their increase in carbon monoxide emissions, methane emissions. It's not just a, the cost isn't just going to burden us today, but when the natural disasters increase, when we're not really impacted by hurricanes, but if water warms up, hurricanes can start hitting Southern California. They're already in Baja, California, so it's just something that I have to look forward to. The cost of disasters is definitely going to increase when climate change is happening faster and faster. So we need to do our little part in Hermosa Beach. We need to work with our business community to make sure they're not overburdened with regulation. We need to talk to our residents, making sure that they're on board with being supportive of these policies moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
Well, if mankind is changing the climate, then mankind can fix it. And I think that's what we're trying to do right now. I think that national argument has been had. I think we're trying to move in the right direction. I think the U.S. again is the cleanest country in the world and getting cleaner all the time. Our technology leads the world in greenhouse gas reduction and pollution reduction, and as citizens, we live in a free nation and enjoy the benefits and blessings that this great country has provided us. So pollution, greenhouse gases, leading the world, I think the United States is the one that is best-suited to do that. And to protect our economy and our engine, we also need to deal with China because they're the biggest polluters in the world. We need to pull back from our reliance on China and so that we can then now be stronger here in America and take more of the world with us when we're reducing pollution and greenhouse.
Thank you. That was the last question, and now the candidates will make their closing statements. We will reverse the starting order and start with Mr. Massey.
Thank you. So as I mentioned at the outset, we have a lot of projects underway. North School, which is a district project, but one that involves the school, excuse me, the city closely. We have a joint transportation consultant, and we're in the process of putting together a neighborhood transportation management plan. The improvements to PCH, rebuilding the fire station. We've already done the community center. We've done South Park. We have the city yard on our agenda. We have major sewer and street repairs slated to begin this fall up in northeast Hermosa. There is a lot on our plate. We've accomplished all of that while balancing the budget and filling the rainy day fund and reducing our pension and healthcare costs. The city is in very good fiscal shape. We are tackling our infrastructure problems, and we are moving forward in not only doing the nuts and bolts of what local government should be doing, but also doing it in a way that improves the community's quality of life. We adopted Plan Hermosa, which gives us a blueprint for the next 25 years about the way the city should go. We have been building out projects like South Park and the Eighth Street Safra to School and renovating various parts of town to make this more bike-friendly, more walk-friendly, the type of community that all of... all of our generations are going to want to live in going forward for many, many years to come. With all of that said, that is why I am running for reelection, is to make sure that we keep that momentum. And so I thank you all for being here. I thank the League again for providing this forum. It's been incredibly valuable. I thank my counterparts, Trent and Mike, for being here and participating as well. Let's keep moving Hermosa forward. I ask for your vote. Please click over to justinforcouncil.com to learn more. Thank you.
Mr. Detoy?
Thank you all for being in attendance tonight. Thank you to council member Massey and Mr. Larson for the great conversation. To you, the public, for the wonderful questions and to the League of Women Voters for the event, this forum this evening. It's been wonderful sharing my vision for our best little beach city, and I want to listen to your vision for the future as well. My focus of this campaign is about public safety and quality of life issues. When I go to the fire station, I want to make sure that my wife and daughter are safe back home. Emergency preparedness is a passion of mine and that's why I served as a city commissioner on EPAC. Every decision that the city council needs to make needs to factor in public safety. I will work to preserve our small town character and unique, unique aesthetic heritage of our neighborhoods, our parks, and our downtown area. I will support our sense of community. We need to encourage local events that promote our local businesses. I spend the majority of my days at home walking my daughter around town or at the parks and libraries. I see the conditions of our city streets and sidewalks and we need to increase accessibilities and safety for our community. Responsible fiscal management is also a priority of mine. With a degree in finance, along with a master's degree in public administration, I have the knowledge base and experience not just balance our budget, but to actually increase our bond rating. Hermosa Beach is my home. I love this town and I want to make sure we protect our small town character, support our vibrant local economy, and protect our quality of life. Thanks again for the time this evening. I hope I earned your vote. For more information, please, please visit www.michaledetoy.com or like detoyforhermosa, the number four, on Facebook or Instagram. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larson?
Well, thank you so very much for attending tonight and thank you for your excellent questions. It was very informative and I think anybody listening or watching got a good feel for who we are as candidates and I really appreciate that. Thank you. I have been active in government now for five years. I have lived in Hermosa Beach since 2003. I coached a lot of soccer and that was a lot of fun. I've also coached basketball and I've served on the Redondo Beach Budget and Finance Commission. I'm part of this community and have demonstrated my willingness to serve. And I want to continue to do that. And everybody who's paying attention should know pretty much who they're going to get when they elect me. They're going to know the person. And, and I think that's good. And I try to let you know who I am. And over time, I tend to grow on people and I think that's a good thing. Hermosa Beach, this city, they need a genuine taxpayers advocate, whose primary goals include street and sewer repair, public park restoration, improve public safety, and being business friendly. Tax dollars working to her, to improve Hermosa Beach by upgrading city cleanliness, initiating the sewer replacement, enhancing the green belt, opening North School, revitalizing Clark Field, rebuilding the Clark Building, the firehouse, resurfacing damaged streets, and relieving the homeless from homelessness in Hermosa Beach. And I will constructively collaborate with other city leaders to, to let reasonable and deliverable solutions be implemented, protecting our local zoning control and our small town charm. Enhance public space beautification, vigorous events of local zoning control, and supporting local businesses and attracting new businesses. And I would really appreciate your vote and I will make a tremendous councilman and I promise you that with all my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Beach Cities, I want to thank the candidates for running to serve this community and for coming here this evening. And this seems like a good time for a well-deserved applause.[1730.82][1730.82][applause] And thank you for being an attentive audience and for asking good questions. We encourage all the candidates to enter their information on votersedge.org/ca. And voters, go to votersedge.org/ca for information on the candidates. Remember to vote on November 5th and encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote as well. Good night, everybody.[1769.01][1769.01][applause]